We will now open the regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council on Redevelopment Successor Agency, Clear Lake City Council Chambers, 14050 Olympic Drive, Clear Lake, California, Thursday, September 24, 2015, at 6:03 PM. May I get roll call, please? Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Cirda?
Here.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Present.
Mayor Lucilow?
Present. Councilmember Overton, will you lead us in the pledge along with Pastor Luhan following with our invitation this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we probably ask for your blessings upon our country right now. We pray, Lord, that you equate our hearts, oh God, with all the fires that have been going on, with all the anxiety, Lord, we've all been affected some way or another. And our hearts go out to those, Lord, who have been affected by losing their homes or even people that they love, oh God. So we pray, Lord God, that you would touch those hearts, Lord, that need to touch from you. We pray, Lord God, that you would touch our hearts and put peace in it, oh God. We ask that you would forgive our sins and forgive our sins as a city, oh God. We also pray that you would rather hear the cries of us, your people, Lord. And you specifically tell us, Lord, that if we call upon you, that you will answer us, and you will show us great and mighty things that we do not know. So we pray for our council members, Lord. We pray for Denise, Mayor Denise. We pray for Gina and Joyce, and we pray for Russ and Bruno, Lord. We ask that you give them wisdom from above and truly guide them, oh God. Oh, to make them brave and strong, Lord, that they may make decisions that will affect all of our lives, but also remind them, oh God, that father, they are servants of the people, oh God. We also pray, oh God, that you be with us. Walk amongst us, oh God, and do what you do best. Shepherd us and guide us, oh God. In Jesus' precious name we pray, Lord.
Thank you. Moving on to adoption of the agenda. Is there any modifications this evening?
Yes, there is, Mayor. Very actually, very happy to pull item number nine. The person who was filing the appeal has complied with the abating order and is no longer in violation.
Very good, thank you. With that, may I get a motion?
I move to approve the agenda with number nine pulled.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Cirda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Lucilow?
Aye. And I will turn this over to our city attorney for any announcements from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council received briefing from staff and legal counsel as indicated in the closed session agenda items. No action taken.
Thank you. So with that, we will move on to number one presentation on the Clear Lake Cyanobacterium Monitoring Program. And I'd like to welcome, don't let me mess up your name though, Karola Kennedy? Yes.
Hi, and I'm also, I'm Sarah Ryan, I'm the Environmental Director at Big Valley Bend of Indian. And Karola and I are here today to do a presentation on our cyanobacteria and cyanotoxin monitoring program that we've been conducting since last fall. This year, we started in earnest in about June. And as you'll see in the presentation, there are some specific things that are happening along the shores of the city of Clear Lake. We've already done a presentation before the Board of Supervisors about a month ago. We are going to also have a presentation to the city of Lakeport. We do send these results to all the elected officials in the county as well as other members of our task force, which we will go into the presentation. But we also wanted to have a chance to address all of you just with the program to give you an update of what we've been doing and also make some suggestions on what we think are ways to address the toxin issues along the shoreline. We're not used to doing it with one mic. So first, a word about the tribal environmental protection programs. So two tribes that we work for, the Elin Indian Colony, Karola's, Environmental Director of Elin, and myself, that work for two tribes along the shores of Clear Lake. And we have environmental protection programs that are there, like any jurisdiction, any government would have environmental protection programs. Of course, it might be dispersed under several different things, like the county has environmental health and they have water resources. We combine all those things together. So we just want to give a tiny little bit about our own environmental programs. The tribes have been collecting data on Clear Lake since the 90s and submitting it to US EPA. So we have strong partnerships with US EPA as well as with the states, the state of California and the local governments because we all share the same desire, which is to improve the water quality of Clear Lake and to make sure that the resources in it are thriving because we all use them and we all depend on the tourism and the ability to recreate in the lake. So we do our part by not only having programs, implementation programs to reduce pollution in Clear Lake, but also collecting water data, and that informs us about how we need to manage our portion of the lake. We also want to protect the lake because, and protect natural resources because the tribes, more than other people, use the resources of Clear Lake in a way that's even more often than most people. There's more fish that Native Americans eat. They are in the water for various ceremonies. And just like with any spiritual practice, you can't avoid certain things. You have to go in at certain times and do certain things. And that is the same with the tribes of Clear Lake. They can't stay out during a cyanobacteria bloom because they need to be in there at certain times. And that is how a lot of them view it and as part of their own spiritual practices. And then thirdly, most of you have a part about environmental justice. And environmental justice is when you have pollution disproportionately impacts certain populations. And there are federal laws about that and state laws about that, that you need to do things to reduce that impact on these sensitive populations. So our programs are addressing those components. The next slide. So the program goals of our cyanobacteria and cyanotoxin monitoring, and we will talk about what that is, but our program goals is to protect these tribal uses that I've just mentioned, the ability to be able to get in the water when they need to for ceremonial purposes, the ability to consume fish at the rates that they need to, the ability to recreate in the lake. And we all benefit from that because if it's clean enough for them to go in as often as they need to, then it's clean enough, it's going to be clean enough for everybody and safe enough for everybody. So we want to make sure that those uses are protected. We also want to make sure that we're collaborating with the local governments and jurisdictions that also have regulatory requirements over Clear Lake. So our work since last fall has been transparent. We've sent out all the lab data, and we continue to work with state and local federal officials because this is an important topic. We also are doing science. So we're looking at whether, we're seeing trends because we are looking at water chemistry as well as looking at toxin data and seeing if we can see some reasons why certain things happen at certain times. And finally, and we'll get into this, but the toxin levels that we're seeing at certain parts of the shores of the city of Clear Lake are extremely high, and they go way beyond the recommended levels that the state and the feds have recommended to do something about. So we think that because it's public health issue, that this is where the elected officials need to act and the public needs to know about it, and they need to approach the action on these, because of the data. The next slide. We do, as I said, we have a, we're doing science, so we have to use a, and we're collecting data, so we have to have a federally approved quality assurance plan. That means that we've chosen sites for specific reasons. We have standard operating procedures. We use labs that are certified. All of our data is documented very carefully, is submitted to the regulations. It's legally sound, so if there was some legal case over this, there would be no question about how we're doing it and the results that we're coming up with. So in other words, it would be duplicatable, too. So we just wanted to put that out there, that it's part of all of our water quality monitoring programs, and certainly the cyanobacteria and cyanotoxin monitoring as well. Okay, the next slide, please.
So in 2014, we started the program in September, is when we started doing our testing. In 2014, we did have eight sites around the lake that we used, that we were testing at, most of them were tribally sensitive sites. Our initial, the initial goal of this was to collect baseline data so that we had a baseline to work from scientifically and look at where we need to move to and forward. We did form a task force based on some of these results we had received in order to collaborate with the city and the state and local officials and the ability to be transparent and relay out the information and the data and the different, or the different data that we were getting. We did advocate last year for signage along different shorelines because some of the results we were getting back were extremely high and over the thresholds that were recommended by the federal agencies and the state agencies. So one of our first, one of our first goals was for signage for public health reasons to inform the public and to be able to allow for the public to make that choice and decision if they do want to recreate in that beach line area. And we also were working with Flower in the Lake, with the other agencies to discuss next year, or the 2015 monitoring plan, where we would go from there, how many more sites could we add on, what other sites they wanted to see, what were some of the ideas of designing the next monitoring plan for the next year, how did they want to look at it in a recreational standpoint, drinking water standpoint, and what were some of the high points that were, we wanted to come out in 2015. So, the next slide. With our monitoring program and with our graph, as Sarah had discussed, we do have to look at EPA regulated labs that we are allowed to use, that are, that are qualified through EPA to be able to do this type of testing through different analysis. The three labs we are using or have chosen to use is US EPA Region 9 Laboratory in Richmond, California. This one is, we haven't started using this one this year, it's probably going to be in our 2016 monitoring plan. Currently, we do use the California Health and Food Safety Laboratory down in UC Davis. And then we also do use ALFA Analytical for some of our, at least, or some of our people qualify for tests. This is the federal regulation guidelines and threshold for the microsystems from OEHOP. It was done in, I'm sorry, the state, Cal EPA, and it was designed in 2012. Their threshold recommendation for human recreation for microsystems is 0.8 parts per billion. And then they also do have some thresholds listed in here on, for animals and dogs, which we did pass out this, do you guys, you do have this one?
One item about that is, these particular toxins are the ones that are produced by blue green algae. We're about to kind of say that at the beginning, but the blue green algae blooms that you're seeing out there are, there are various kinds, and we will have, we have a table in here and also it's something that we handed out to you. But there are different kinds of cyanobacteria, or blue green algae is another name for it. And these, this cyanobacteria has a potential for producing toxins. And we'll go into what those toxins can do to you, we have a table for that. But this particular state recreation guideline, as Karola said, is based on toxicological study that OEHOP, which is the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, which is part of Cal EPA, that this agency developed after looking at the data and doing, basically looking at how this could impact people. And it is an extremely low action level, 0.8 parts per billion for microsystems. And we're seeing much more, we're seeing levels of 17,000 on the Clear Lake shoreline, okay? So huge difference there. This 0.8 parts per billion for microsystems for human recreational uses is based on children playing in the water and swallowing water. So that's why it's been set so low. Now, the state of, the other agencies in California have set that level a little higher, but while health organizations who first started studying this and set thresholds, set it even higher than that. So it is, but the most recent threshold is this, I'm sorry, is this OEHOP table that says that in order to, that this is a level where there's no effect. This is a level that after this, you need to start doing something about those levels and keeping people out of that area. So 0.8, so keep that in mind when we start going through the data. The next slide. Here is the other threshold that's been set by the state. And by set, I'm saying, what I mean is recommended. These are not mandatory and these are not required. This is, this is the rub, okay? It's not required, but these are based on studies. So they're not, they can't come in and tell you, your level is this, you must shut down these beaches. This is more, and a, these are recommended guidelines, but it is based on science and it is based on public health and recommending to jurisdictions that they take action at these levels. It will be years before we have actual standards, and that's because of the process that advisories have to go through. So even with the drinking water advisories for, that have just recently came out, we're probably about 10 years away from that being required. But we have an opportunity to be more, to be more proactive and to be more transparent by actually doing testing, by informing the public, and by taking some steps. So this particular, this other threshold that you see on the screen is, came from the State Environmental Resources Control Work Group in it, that in July 2010, which is two years before the OEHOP ones, and they say at eight parts per billion, you want to post health advisory signs for microsystems, or if there's presence of antitoxin A. Antitoxin A is the one that killed the dog in the Russian River the other day that was in the news. So, and we do have trace amounts of that in Lake County, but not only in Clear Lake shoreline, thank goodness, more up in Lakeport, so.
So as we just talked about our task force, it does consist of the tribes, the city of Clear Lake and Lakeport, Lake County Water Resources, Lake County Environmental Health, Lake County Public Health Officer, US EPA Region 9 Water Programs and Tribal Programs, the State Water Resource Support, California Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessment, California Department of Public Health, Cal EPA, and Central Valley, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. We do hold these task force meetings approximately about every two months. If there's a lot to highlight, we'll bring them in about every month. But when there's not much to go over or to discuss or to collaborate on, we leave it about it every two months, and we do send the invitation out to all of these stakeholders. So here's our map on our 2014 cyanotoxin testing. Those are the eight sites that we had chosen for 2014. As I did say, most of them are tribally sensitive sites, and that was our initial choosing of sites. And then there were some county and city beach lines that we did choose that had high recreation areas. The next slide. The next slide is a handout that I didn't give you. It's the toxin-producing cyanobacteria. These are the different cyanobacterias that we do see in Clear Lake last year and this year. We have seen them. We, last year, all our testing was mainly done for microsystems. This year, we are working, we have been testing for other toxins based on some of the cell identifications we've been doing, which are worth discussing more.
Please note that the microsystems cyanobacteria produces, so that is the type of cyanobacteria that we've seen vainly in the lake in 2014 and 2015, but right now we're talking about the 2014 monitoring program. It does produce microsystems, which is a hepatotoxin, and that's something that will affect people's livers over time. And the OEHOP chart that we saw shows also that dogs can be affected by it, and if they eat the mats, then they're getting, and they eat a lot, and it's just kind of a one-day thing, they set one level. But if they're there swimming in the lake on a regular basis in these areas where the microsystem levels are quite high, then they will develop liver damage over time. But the microsystems is actually produced by several different types of cyanobacteria, some of which we do find in Clear Lake. There are also neurotoxins and dermatoxins. And dermatoxins are the ones that give you rashes when you go in. We don't usually see that cyanobacteria in Clear Lake lately. I think it was there in 2009, 2010, and we're certainly not seeing it down in your area. So it's not something that will affect your skin, it's more if you're swallowing the water or inhaling water droplets. So that's what we're talking about, or drinking water from the lake. And there are some water purveyors that are pulling water from Clear Lake, in the city of Clear Lake, and we're going to talk about that a little bit, too.
Here are some of the results that we did receive from Lakeport TNT at the Third Street Boat Run, First Street Boat Run for the 2014. We did see two levels here that did exceed the state recommended value of eight parts per billion. Unfortunately, unfortunately, Clear Lake is in the hot zone. Based on your currents and where your location is and the fact that Cache Creek is your only outlet to Clear Lake, everything flows down to here. So most of your higher results are seen down in here and in a couple of the codes up in Clear Lake goes. Next one. And then on the next slide, we do have Big Valley Ranch Marina, where she does do some, but Big Valley Ranch, oh, where's that? Sorry, I had a point, I apologize. And she had mostly known texts there, but there is some mitigation that Sarah does do, and she will discuss some of those plans that she does on that. Here's Austin Park and the results that we did receive last year from Austin Park. They did have some of the higher levels also, and they do get some of the higher mats. Approximately, it's roughly around 50 to 60 percent of the time, it does sit at a higher level above the recommended threshold. We have Clear Lake Oaks, which was what really spurred us to reach out to a lot of the agencies and start the task force, because at the time that we received that 16,000 parts per billion, my test site is only about 30 yards away from the drinking water intake, which really was alarming because it, I mean, you don't know what it's, we don't know what it's pulling in at that point. It does change, I mean, as you move along the shoreline, as you move out into the lake, your levels do change. But I mean, who's to say it doesn't go up higher or where it goes from there? And then in the CERN, the CERN in these has been the area that we found to be the most easy, or the most leveled out area that doesn't seem to get the, most of the mats are most polluted, and the toxin levels stay pretty low. But I think that's more because of the currents and the way that it burns out through there.
So the 2015 monitoring program, we're monitoring at 18 sites. So we're doing eight sites from this past year plus add 10. We are doing field data measurements like we did last year. We have a hydro lab, which is a probe we throw in, so we get pH, temperature, dissolved oxygen, et cetera, things that will clue you into whether you're having a problem. We also do cyanobacteria cell identification. That's new this year, and that actually saves us money because we're doing, we're sending off to a lab for analysis based on what kind of blue green algae, what kind of cyanobacteria we find in each site. We're also using an in-house kit called Elisa, it's from a company called Riveraxis. And we did that last year as well, but we're really incorporating it into our documentation this year so we can see trends. And we are reaching out a lot more than we did last year, we had the task force, but this is probably our sixth presentation, we have more to go. By the fact we're going to be at State Capitol tomorrow for Native American Indian Day, and we'll have a booth on this Capitol. And then our data documentation, we are submitting the data to the Central Data Exchange, which is part of the federal database. The next slide. Here are the 18 sites for this year. The orange sites are the new ones, so, and you have a copy of this, so we've added some more. We really tried to spread it out so that we had even number in the upper arm, oats arm and lower arm, but we also have some private properties where they're wanting us to test, so we're doing that in the Buckingham area. And then we have, we've added a few more resorts. But we do have county and city beaches, city of Lakeport, city of Clear Lake beaches. And there's also a sample inside a Cache Creek at a resort that's, these are all, we don't go in like gorilla, and if you're not, you would go in permission from the elders or do these samples. Yeah, I think that's right. So this is hard to see, and we didn't give you a copy of it, but it's just part of, we did have a rationale for choosing sites. So some of the sites we chose because they were tribally important sites, some of them because there was a lot of recreation going on there, swimming, there's a plane round nearby, fishing. Cyanotoxins do build up in fish, that's a study that we're about to embark on, but there is definitely evidence that the toxin level, I know the toxins build up in the guts, a lot of people remove the guts regularly, you can't do that with plants, you can't do that with prey fish. So there are potentially some organisms that people are eating, especially tribes, but other people that where the cyanotoxin levels do build up in those, so, you know, sorry to add bad news on bad news, but it is something that we might have to deal with. We are waiting for some results that, from a small partnership that we were doing from the California Department of Public Health. The next slide. This is just Big Valley's, it's our field data sheet of the data that we collect when they say we're doing water chemistry, so just examples of turbidity and pH and dissolved oxygen, salinity, et cetera. This is our cell ID log that we developed, and I think you have a copy of that. So what we do is we go onto the site, we take pictures, we drop our hydro lab in, we wipe the data down, we take two samples, and we bring it back to our offices. Elin does one side of the lake, we do the other. And then what we do is we put samples from each site under the microscope, and we look to see what kind of cyanobacteria it is. And remember that table that you saw earlier, it said type of cyanobacteria and the type of toxin that it produces? We're choosing analysis of the toxin, because the sample's $125 a sample. And we're not going to send it off to a lab for certain analysis if, you know, the cyanobacteria is not there for it. We've already spent, you know, there's quite a bit of money's been spent on this in the last two years, probably between the two tribes, somewhere in the range of $20,000 or $30,000, and that's not including weed. So what this, you know, this information is basically giving us a well-rounded study of not only the type of cyanobacteria that are found throughout the lake over multiple seasons, but also toxin levels that have public health impacts. Next slide, please. Again, the table of the toxins-producing cyanobacteria, the, we see, most of the ones that you see in the first column, which is the genera, that is, most of those are cyanobacteria that we see in Clear Lake. And then we do toxin analysis, we send off to the UC Davis lab based on the type of cyanobacteria that we see. Okay, the next slide. So we've handed out tables to you, and these are tables that we're having, that we do email out, so if members of the public did want to get copies, we brought a couple of copies, but they, yeah, it's a few pages. And so what we've done with that, there's a few columns in there, but we'll go into it for the sake of time, but you can see that we do, we list the dates that we sampled with the sites, and you can match the site up with the map. And then we put the dominant genus of the cyanobacteria. The next, then our, the next column is our Elisa test kits results. So we're trying to see, and EPA is, we've seen this as well, as if this field test, which only costs $25 a test, is good enough to tell us whether they're, you know, we're getting, you know, correct, you know, no false positives, no false negatives, but how often are we seeing that we see results on these Elisa test kits that when we send it off to a lab, it corroborates the results? So we're continuing to do that, but that's why you see the Elisa test kit in there. And then you see the different types of cyanotoxins. Microsystem is the main one that we've tested for, and that is a hepatotoxin, but we have tested for some of the neurotoxins as well, if the cyanobacteria guides us to do that, depends on what we see present. We do have a PhD on staff at Big Valley Ranch area, and we also work closely with US EPA in terms of guidance of this, so we're, you know, we're working through any kinks of this program, but like, as Karola said, we've been doing this since fall of last year, so we're pretty much worked out all our kinks. The next slide. So we have some recommendations, or this is what we've noticed about the city of Clear Lake, that because, you know, unfortunately because of the currents and whatnot, that the highest concentrations of the cyanotoxins are along the shoreline. And in, just this year alone, Austin Park has had elevated levels 75 percent of the times that we've monitored. We go out every two weeks, and we've been doing that basically since May, early June. So by elevated, I mean that the microsystem levels are over eight parts per billion, which is a level that the state has set needs public is a level that the state has set needs public advisory signage. That's still well over the 0.8 parts per billion that the Office of Environmental Health has an assessment has designated as, you know, is the level, anything over that, that a child in there swimming over a period of time in an afternoon will start to have some health effects. So, you know, Austin Park is really the spot to target. There's a resort on Cache Creek that has elevated levels 50% of the time, Red Bud, 63% of the time. Now, we know that Red Bud is, you know, mostly voting, most people are not voting in there swimming, so Austin's really the ones, the one that we're concerned about in terms of the toxin levels, and what could or should be done about that? Now, next slide, please. So I'll just talk about this little, and Corolla, to know that the 2015 task force, we've had two meetings so far this year, and partially because, you know, the fires, and partially because the, there's been some discussion with the county about how they want to handle signage. They somewhat shifted based on, they shifted from how they did it last year. Last year, there were some signs put up at Austin Park, we didn't sample Red Bud last year, but there were signs put up in places where the levels were over 20. So the county has somewhat backed away from that in terms of saying, you know, we can't require it, so we'll recommend to the city of Clear Lake if we put these signs up, we'll recommend to the resort owners if we put these signs up, but they can do what they want to, it's a liability issue. So people go in, they get swimming, and they get ill, because you've got toxin levels that are well over the recommended guidelines, then that's on you. So the counties, I don't know if the counties, you know, if, how many discussions you guys have had with them, but that's what we're hearing. But the task force, the 2013 and the 2014 task force, some of the discussions centered around what should those signs look like? And we're definitely, there were recommendations from the attendees of, the city clearly did send attendees, send representatives to the task force last year, and one of the recommendations they had is have something that you can kind of see from the street whether this is not such a good beach right now. And we're committed to changing the colors of things, changing the signs, because we're out there every two weeks, and we're planning on doing this for at least another year, if not longer, and maybe funding will kick in for one of you guys to do something on your own beach, but, or, you know, within the city of Clear Lake. But we, the, this, these signs that Corolla talked about are ones that the Scotts Valley Band of Palma Indians received money to put these signs together, so they'll actually pay to put these signs up for you, they'll pay to make the signs, you know, metal signs that are appropriate size, and they are interested in meeting with the city council, whenever works for you. And they wanted to pass it on to you today, they wanted me to pass it on to you today. But it is a grant that they received from Cal EPA. Big Valley also has a Cal EPA grant, doing some cyanotoxin monitoring with that. But the signage is not something you have to pay for, you could help develop it, and there are some community focus groups that they'd like to hold in Clear Lake, as well as other places around the lake, so they could get community input, also input from the council, on really how to best communicate the risks, so that people can make informed decisions about whether they want to go in or not. Not to scare anybody, but, you know, if someone has immune system disorders or whatever, their dog is really old, or something, you know, they might not want to go in the lake at that time, because the toxin levels are quite high. So these are some signage potential that the task force and a small group has come up with that is still in draft form, but as I said, Scotts Valley would like to talk with the city to further that and pay for those signs, and you don't have to go through the county to do that, obviously, you're an elected official, so you guys could actually do this and make a determination in the sand to put signs up.
And some of the other things that we've discussed, too, with Scotts Valley, was also possible kiosks that would have some different ideas for other recreations, or, you know, whether it be hiking, or cycling, or any other types of recreation, kayaking, something along that line. And also a phone number, as you can see on these signs, there's a phone number listed below, but a phone number that people could call, the public could call to actually hear what beaches are safe at that point in time, with the test results that have come in. So giving them options, so they're not going somewhere else, but they are staying in Clear Lake and recreating. So this is just an example, the low, medium, and high. Go ahead and flash through that one. And then the next, the next slide, oh, next one after that, there we go. It's basically, the sign is designed like what you would have on the back of a trailer for hazmat signs, the foot signs, and that's how they would change, in that manner. Go ahead to the next one.
So as Corolla mentioned early on, the results that we get along the Big Valley shoreline, and we have two spots, one along the Ranch area proper, and also at the tri plot Farndale, we'll all call it Clear Lake Vista. And we've been doing the same thing in both of our locations now for several years, tribe shoreline even longer. But we do manual weed removal, which I know I've mentioned to Clear Lake city officials in the past, and we also do aeration, and we basically have a water pump where we're pulling in water, and go ahead and, I guess, next slide, here's, we, so we compost, and it's actually a good source of fertilizer. Next slide shows the actual aeration, so we use a water pump, you don't have to stand in the water, here's one of our guys at Clear Lake Vista, but you use a fire hose and a water pump, and you pull the water out from the lake and then spray it toward it. Now, all it's doing is oxygenating the water, but cyanobacteria is opportunistic, so if you have a really kind of calm, cove area, you're going to see these cyanobacteria blooms. If you're disturbing that water, and you do it early and you do it often, then you're not going to see those blooms form into mats. So that's what we've been doing since 2000, matter of fact, the county brought up the idea back in 2009, when we saw the bloom start, is hey, find ways to aerate. And they've handed up aeration devices and whatnot, they're always too small, they don't do a mountain thing, but if you target it with actually people out there doing it, we spent about $15,000 a summer to hire our local guys to monitor, I mean, to do aeration in, at the tribes' two shorelines, and it makes a huge difference, because we don't get those mats. Over long weekends, when we can't get out there, it starts to get bad. They go back out there, and for three, four hours, every other day, they're out there aerating. And we really think that, you know, especially Austin Beach, where you have extremely high levels, something needs to be done, and if you, and you've got a nice long shoreline, the people could be standing there actually removing it if possible, or doing the aeration like this, and it's a relatively inexpensive way to at least, it's not solving the problem, but it's alleviating the conditions. Send that slide. Part of the problem, as you all know, we have nutrient TMDL on Clear Lake, we've got a lot of food that goes into the lake, and cyanobacteria really likes phosphorus and nitrogen. So here's a list of the sources of these two nutrients, and we all know, dirt roads and the erosion from dirt roads, and this is, you know, Clear Lake is plagued with that. I don't think there are any septic tanks that are along the Clear Lake shoreline anymore. I think you guys are all on sewer, and that's a fantastic thing, but sewer leaks do cause problems, runoff from fertilizers, you want to watch the agriculture and the liquid marijuana production that's happening up in the hills, and the runoff that's coming from that. But there are, basically, the soils are high in phosphorus around here, so anytime when you're seeing dirty water going down, that's probably feeding the lake. Nitrogen is another thing that cyanobacteria really, really likes, so sewer spills, leaching septic tanks, and also store water, sources of that. So just like every single report that's ever come out about Clear Lake says, we have to control all of those things. Today was the day that the 319 loan from SIRF grant was due to the regional board. I don't know if the city was able to apply for it, or if the county applied for it. We got about halfway there and couldn't do it, but it was $800,000, and it is something that would, it's all about reducing nutrient loading, so how they recommend going after those 319 loan from SIRF grants that come out every year. Next slide. So some suggestions for the council is based, what we've been talking about today, is to install signage that's based on the results, because the public really has the right to know, and the risks and the options. And as it is right now, the sign that you have there is based on, was put up last year, and now we're taking down at Austin, and it says warning, elevated levels of cyanotoxins, or something like that. It's an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper that's neon colored, probably now it's faded. And really, you know, and someone else is going to pay for the sign, they'll put the sign up and everything, and we will change our sign based on numbers after conferring with everybody. But signage is really doable and is recommended, because the levels at, especially at Austin, are extremely high. We also think you should do press releases when the toxin levels have exceeded the guidelines for safe recreating. It's a smart thing to do, it's a wise thing to do, and I think the public deserves the right to know. There's a, you know, programs you can develop to evade weeds through non-chemical means, because what happens is your weeds are out there, you're spraying, what happens, the weeds drop down to the bottom, they become food for next year. That's it. What we do when we're manually removing the weeds, or when mechanical harvesting is happening, is the sources of phosphorus and nitrogen are coming out. So therefore, there's no more of that phosph, there's no, you know, there's still lots of places where phosphorus and nitrogen are loading in the lake, but at least you're removing it from that area. We think you should aerate the shoreline to reduce the cyanobacteria blooms, and also that there are, how many water purveyors in Clear, of City of Clear Lake?
Three, I believe there's three, Golden State, Knott's Island, Highland.
They are not required to test for cyanotoxins in the treated water, but because it's not a requirement right now, but because these are neurotoxins and hepatotoxins that we're finding along the Clear Lake shoreline, City of Clear Lake shoreline, we truly believe that the water purveyors, not only in Clear Lake, but in Clear Lake general, you know, the whole lake, that they should be testing for the treated water for cyanotoxins and letting the public know, because their plants, it's really highly unlikely their plants are able to take out levels of 10,000 or more, and Austin Park had a 10,000 parts per billion, it was the highest since it, it's the highest, the highest number since this year, it has been at Austin Park, it's 10,000. It is lower than last year's number, 17,000 at Clear Lake, but it's still the highest number on the lake so far. But because of that, because you have water purveyors here, and the tendency for these levels to be high, we think, I don't know if you can require it, because they're private, but, you know, we're on a campaign to change the state law to make, you know, to have it just happen to the water purveyors in the state of California and need to test, but if you could have conversations with the water purveyors, we think that you should have that with them and require them to test for the treated water for cyanotoxin. Just the water quality out there. Next slide. US EPA does support the task force and the work that we're doing, because they do think it's actually going to get to solutions. Numbers are great, this is a public health issue, but numbers will actually show us where to concentrate activities. So it's something that EPA has said that they support, this work that we're doing, and that the task force is doing. Next slide. Just a few things, it is time, the cyanotoxin is in the news, you heard about the Toledo, Ohio incident, where water purveyors shut down for thousands and thousands of people that drink the water, and they were willing to do it, because the toxin levels are much lower than what we have here, but they did do that over there. There are, the state of California is, continues to reiterate the public advisory levels for safe recreating, so you would be, you know, stepping in line with other water bodies and other jurisdictions to be active and proactive about these levels. There was recently the dog death in Russian River, and I think you're going to see this more and more in the news. There are also drinking water guidelines that have been set at 0.3 parts per billion for micro systems, and I don't, we don't know whether the water purveyor is going to get the levels that low, but, because it's below the 0.8, but it won't be an actual mandatory thing until, you know, for at least 10 years, what EPA is telling us. Next slide. There are, you've probably heard about the satellite imagery, the federal agencies are working on this, and they want to work with all the local governments to use it as early morning satellite, or early morning system for determining where the blooms are moving to.
And just to kind of get a reference to the numbers, on the conversations I've had with the state water board engineers that deal with the drinking water purveyors, they have stated that most facilities here around the lake can take out two magnitudes, so two magnitudes down to 0.3 is 30. So they figure anything between 30 and 70 in the raw water is okay, parts per billion is something that could be possibly taken out before it's gone through and out into distribution, but anything beyond that, they're not certain that it will happen. And where there's no testing that's regulated or mandated that they do, it's not being done.
So that's the end of our presentation, if you have any questions, and also just want to say thank you for allowing us to present here, and we're, you know, invite you to our next task force meeting, anyone who can attend it from the city council, and would be happy to talk at the offline about other issues that are interesting in that as well. And if you have any questions, we're counting on you. Thank you. Councilmember Overton?
Oh, good, Sarah, you basically always do a good job, and I'm always impressed with your abilities to do this, and I thank you for doing that for our county, otherwise it probably wouldn't be being there. I have a question, when you were talking about the cyanobacteria being still in the clams and the fish and everything, have you tested what the cyanobacteria is after cooking?
I don't, the way to remove the toxins is from actually removing the flesh of it, so there have, there were tested, there were tests in 2005 up in the clam with salmon, and they found that it was going into the, into the flesh of the salmon, you know, the end of the run. And I don't think there's any data, as far as I know, there's not any data on clams and mussels, but cyanotoxins aren't affected by that, as far as I know. There's a lot more work that needs to be done, and we should be receiving some results from California Department of Public Health, they did take some fish samples down in Clear Lake area, you know, where Austin, Red Bud. Okay, so the lake looks like pea soup right down in that area, that one in July, and we have fish data from that that's coming out to public health really soon. But I will get back with you on that, because I don't know.
I'd like to know if after it's cooked, was the, is there still a toxin there that's dangerous or not, you know, and then if there's not, because there's a lot of things that might be toxin before, that are not toxin after heat has been applied. So I would really be curious about that, because that may be something, if it's not, we would want to put out, of course, if you eat these things, make sure that they're cooked appropriately and et cetera, that might be just a good informational thing there. And, you know, the idea of the signs that we can change, and that they're not causing the city anything, that we should be something that the, I feel that the council should consider, so thank you for giving all of that in your presentation, thank you.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Yeah, thank you again for the presentation, and also the emails we received with the data, as you gather that data. I think we talk often here on the dice about public safety, and to me, that's information that takes part with public safety. I have some questions. What, I don't believe you let us know, what are the WHO limits? You said those were elevated compared to what the state limits are at 0.8.
I think it's 20 parts per billion for micro systems, this was developed in the 90s, and that's for, that's a level at which it will have a low effective health impact. It goes up from there, I don't have those numbers in my brain, but 20 is a number that most jurisdictions and the federal government and all the state governments were using up until the last few years, when they started to do more research on it, and that's why it's jumped down to 0.8.
You said it's zero.
But it was 20, and actually, the signage went up last year after the 20, you know, if the levels were higher than 20, and Dr. Karen Tate, the public health officer, had those signs go up when we saw levels higher than 20, and then the signs would come down two weeks after we got a note intact. So that's how it was worked last year. This year, she thinks the signs should go up at 8, based on the California, the draft working group, or the draft guidelines that came out of the state water resource control were that 0.8 seems to be unachievable, or, most jurisdictions are not putting up signs at 0.8, they're doing something at 8, because the state is recommending 8.
At this moment, you're letting us know that those signs are coming down two weeks?
The signs aren't going up or coming down. They're not coming down from last year, that's fine, because, you know, the level is high, so they should go up, but really, there's better signage, that's more, you know, communicating more information, that, you know, people are pretty savvy these days, and, you know, they're going to be Googling stuff on their phone as they're out there, they're pretty ready, one of those little smartphone thingies that you, you know, scan over, there's a whole lot of options that Scotts Valley is willing to do, that they have to go over with you. So, and it could be specific just to Clear Lake, you know, names on it and stuff, so... But yeah, so nothing's happening this year in terms of signage, nothing.
And also, do you know what your levels were in your area for, before we started doing the aeration? Do you know what they were beforehand, and then what they are now, comparison, and is the flow in that area similar to our issue of flow, where we are the recipient of pretty much all the water in the lake?
Well, we have different things going on along the Big Valley shoreline. In the cove of the Marina, I cannot give us a Marina, it is similar in that, I mean, it's, it's a, we're doing some, we're doing mainly weed removal now, we're oxygenating it through aeration, but really, our problem there is weed removal. At another site along the Big Valley shoreline, we do see the cyanobacteria from time to time. time, usually in July. So before our Tulip Boat Festival, we're out there every day clearing weeds, because cyanobacteria tends to, what they, I was talking to the regional board guy from the Russian River, and he said what they're finding is that cyanobacteria seems to be growing in the, finding places to grow in the green algae. Green algae is what our Clear Lake nutrient TMDL is all about, but green algae is food for fish, green algae is not toxic, that was a nuisance and they would like it, well now we've got algae on steroids because we've got toxic, blueberry algae, which fish don't eat, nobody eats, but if you remove a lot of that debris in the water, you're actually removing places where the cyanobacteria can grow. So, but to get to the point, I don't have numbers for what it was before and what it was after, but I can say that before we started the aeration program over at Clear Lake Vista, which is a refound, those homes are all on septic, including the resort, you know, that's a worry of mine, that's an issue of mine that I constantly have to stay on because I don't like septic tanks. But, so the water quality is in worse, is in worse shape than on the Big Valley shoreline, but when I look out and I see what the neighboring properties' blooms look like compared to ours, it's completely different. Ours is barely there, theirs is bad. So I know it makes a difference because, like I said, the oxygen, cyanobacteria is opportunistic in Alexis Still Waters, we're disturbing that. So we also bought for 1,200 bucks defusers that look like, where you put in aquariums and then they just bubble up a lot, and we bought that from USA Blue Oaks and installed that about two years ago, and those turn over the water every 72 hours. So there are different things that you could install, but I do know that, but our toxin levels along the Big Valley shoreline have always been either non-detect or below five throughout this whole monitoring, last year and this year. And Clear Lake Vista, like I said, is on septic, is a little more challenging, I think the highest that we got was in the 30s or something like that, so it's higher than I want, but it's also way lower than other places. I am not going out to other properties in the Cove there, it's a big cove to measure, but like I said visually, their blooms look bad, ours look pretty decent because they're barely there because of our aeration. I see it breaking up, it breaks them up, and it doesn't allow them to, it allows other things to form like weeds.
And one more, a two-part question, you talked about a 319 source grant, could you repeat that?
Yeah, it's a 319 non-point source grant, so it's a Clean Water Act grant that the regional board, so we're in the Century Valley region, they offer it every year, it's $800,000 to do non-point source projects, so basically things to fix nutrient loading. So it's, it has to be connected with a watershed management plan, and I don't know if the city has one of those, or whether you just use the counties, we're just going to use the counties, because it's there, we're going to have that created, but you can, but it is $800,000, and it comes out every year, it is an EPA grant, but it's offered through the regional board.
If I can ask a favor, could you let us know when those come around as well, so you email us with the data that you already emailed?
Yes, yeah, because, and, you know, any of this information, I believe that you had mentioned that you're interested in maybe there might be some beaches or some other places that we're willing to test to find some better locations for recreation if things are really hot in Austin. So I think there's a lot of things that we're absolutely willing to do and share, so just ask, and definitely with that grant, we'll let you know, and you can use all of this data as, you know, documentation for it. For sure. Thank you very much. Seeing nothing else. Is there any questions from the audience this evening for our presentations? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Extremely informational, and thank you for the recommendations. Moving on to public comment, this is a time where you get three minutes to address the council on anything within our jurisdiction that is not on our agenda tonight to discuss. And please remember, because of the Brown Act, we may not answer your questions in this portion of the meeting at all, so questions, please, when you ask a question of us in this, in this part of the meeting, I feel very sad that I can't answer you, so please know that we want to answer you, we just cannot under public comment according to the rules of our meeting. So our first speaker this evening is Bonnie Harris, and she wants to speak about being unhappy with the enforcement of 175 ordinance. Come on up, Bonnie, you have three minutes, and it's time for our speaker.
Okay. I'm going to read this, and I'm going to open my door. My name is Bonnie Harris, I live in Clear Lake. My reason for addressing the council tonight is that I am very unhappy and greatly distressed at the lack of enforcement of the ordinance 175, that describes very clearly that the failure to adopt the ordinance may have led to significant irreversible change in the character of the community, and it was the intent to regulate cultivation here in order to preserve public peace, health, safety, and the general welfare of the citizens of Clear Lake. I was very pleased, as were most Clear Lake residents, that the council saw the need to help our city and pass the ordinance. However, when nothing shows, the grows are still very obvious all over town, people start to doubt that anything is really happening. Point blank, it goes, it does no good to tell us you're going to help to keep our community safe if there is some follow-through. I fear that if there is not real improvement in this county, many people are going to find that you're faced with trying to stay here and fight for the promised improvements or take the easier route and simply sell out and move to a happier and safer environment. I have lived in Clear Lake for 37 years, and I don't want to leave here, but almost have a sense that I am being forced out. So I have come here to ask the council to take a very serious look at what is going on in our town. You are all elected officials, and I'm sure you really have had the best of intentions for the future of Clear Lake, but there has got to be a real change here, and it needs to be soon. When those who care about their homes and neighbors are gone, you will sadly be left with those who do not. We have more co-enforcement right now than we have had in a very long time, and yet it does not show. There are a lot of people who care, and we are asking all of you to be there and let us know and to cure us now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is George Summehed.
Somewhere here.
Thank you for that question.
And on the way up, each of the speakers, if I could encourage you to please call City Hall with questions so that you can receive clarification that we unfortunately can't give you right now.
So with that, I will let you elaborate on your description of what you want to speak on.
Mayor, there's a board, my name is George Summehed, I'm a resident of Clear Lake and a property owner, I own, of course, I rest on, on Lakeshore. We're here tonight to ask for additional protection out there, enforcement at the park, we have no lighting on the boat ramped in, there's several lights that are out, they've been out not for over a year. We have a lot of vandalism, prostitution, gang fights, dog fights, animals being killed at the park, and we make calls and we don't hear response. Several of the property owners out there have had their properties damaged, we get vandalized constantly, we've lost all our surveillance cameras in the past couple nights. It's a constant thing that's going on, I was very impressed, night before last, we had, a phone call was made, and we had law enforcement people out there moving homeless people off the campsites, off the beach, the park comes alight at night, and there's, when the law enforcement comes through, they disappear, they're right back out there, and it's a continuous thing that goes on all night long at the park. We have no safety there, we're just asking for lighting, several lights in that area are completely out, we're blacked out on that end, it's been that way for a year. Putting requests through Doug, the work that he's done there at the park is the finest quality I've seen lately, and it's all being destroyed by people that come out there and vandalize the park, there's been roadies out there, ricochet rocks off our windows, we witness cops getting run over trying to write citations out there, we see prostitution, dog fights out there right in front of our windows, we witness this almost on a daily basis. Our neighbors get their windows shot out, and we're just asking for some extra protection out there, maybe we can work out some kind of surveillance from our building where you can see everything that goes on at that park during the day and at night. We have light in the middle of the park, there are homeless people and the daily park residents stay out there every single day, and there's drinking and fighting going on, we just need enforcement out there on the coves or whatever we can get to help protect us out there at that park, take care of the park. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Fire hydrant, sorry. Yeah, I've lived up here for a little over five years, and I'm just absolutely amazed and pleased with how fast the fire people around here put it out. I was a little bit dismayed when I first, because I had a mill coast down in Milltown that burned out, and the first news was that the firefighters were, couldn't put the fires out because the fire hydrant's down in Milltown, there wasn't enough water pressure, it's just sort of came up like a river. Now we have fire hydrants all the way down, country club guy, but knows we've got them there, and all the years I've lived here, I have never seen anyone come through and make sure they work, and I kind of like to have that done, you know, someone come there over the foot then to make sure we have good flow. The other thing that I talked about, 14th, a country club, new neighbors, they've got a cyan house, very professional looking, saying they're taking appointments for repair. Oh, they should set business.
Maybe our city manager, Mr. Bolson, could give some contact information for the fire hydrant issue that she was concerned about? Our next speaker this evening is Steve Maddox. Needs for Redbud Park.
Yeah, I own the Fostrat, and I'm a neighbor of the Court Thai, and I, they did, got a grant to redo Redbud Park, and they took down the signs stating the park hours, and there's no signs that's stating curfew at the park, and there's no enforcement of curfew at the park, there's no leash law for dogs signing for stating that they need to be on leash, and no enforcement of it, there's no enforcement of drug and alcohol at the park, and under the influence, I mean, I own that house there as well, so I look over the park all day, all night, and it just, there's people everywhere all night long, and it's not being in patrol. It's unsafe, and my house and all businesses and houses around the park have been burglarized, and it's out of control, and I think that enforcement needs to be stepped up. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and speaking. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak on public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the council would like to?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item number six, please.
Number six, very good. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the public would like to pull? Seeing none, item number six.
I'd like to make a recommendation, we accept the consent agenda, so that it would be exceptional removal of item number six.
Roll call out.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Perna?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cortino-Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Lustelmann?
Aye.
I will move over to item number six, then. Would you have questions?
So item number six is about the iPad policy and agreement, I absolutely agree that we should be moving into the future with the paperless office, that's how I work every day, it's paperless, and I love it. However, I also would like to see the amount that was spent, which I think is a little more than I would like to see spent on these things, to have an alteration in the policy, you know, that in Lakeport, there was an option that the council members pay $50, get it as a loan and pay it off at zero interest rate to the city, therefore it becomes our iPad. I just would like to make that policy for future uses, so that if somebody like myself who already has an iPad, we don't have to spend the money through the city to purchase something that is unnecessary. Obviously, this was purchased with previous budgets before I came on the council, however, I would like to rectify that so that in the future, we do not have to spend more money than we have to.
Councilmember Overton?
Yeah, I actually went to Lakeport when they were doing all of this iPad thing, kind of one and ten, that was one of my things, you know, that I wanted to do here, and that was that they could use their own, or if they wanted to purchase the one that the city has, they could make payments on it, and then that was for personal use so they could do other things on it, or you have the option that it's just city use, and you can just use it for city things. So, but I think we still have the budget for five no matter what, am I correct, that just in case on, or is this going to be something that we're going to have in the budget as needed as time goes on? Like, he doesn't want one, so we don't need, you know, we need what, then Gina, Gina need one, I mean, so that would be three, two, you know, if they don't need one, then we only need the budget for three this year, am I correct?
Right, we've already purchased a number of them for the boats, if there are future turnover on the council, then we would either, if we put in a policy where you can purchase it, then they would no longer be there, and then we'd have to purchase new ones at that point, otherwise they would just then be passed on.
Just sort of teleported. Right, okay. And so if we have extra ones that I need for other things, other people can use them in different departments as they go to meetings or whatever, so it's good to have the extra two that would be at this time right now. So, but I do like the option that we can purchase, that was one of the things the city Lakeport did, and I do like that option, so that we can use it for personal if we wanted to, because there's only two council members over there that just use it for city business, the rest are going to purchase them, so.
And I have a question, am I wrong or right that there would be specific type of not software, but kind of like a software program on them, force the city business preloaded on those?
That's correct.
So how would that function, be turned on and off if someone would purchase that?
Right. That would not, that would probably be in the purchase price, the software, and if you choose to use your own, then we would have to purchase the software on your personal iPad.
I think some of the theory that I recall having conversations with Lakeport's mayor was that these go outdated very quickly, and so that there's a pretty good likelihood that even if an outgoing council member is returning this, it may not be very useful for the incoming person because it will be so outdated, I mean, in four years, there's probably forty generations of iPads and what they can function as and do, and so that's kind of the theory there is that they were, it was better off to allow them to purchase this, take it, keep it, and then leave with it, and get a new one for the next person, and they have the option to purchase or retain it with the city. But one of the reasons that a person might want to use this as city business only is because everything you do on your personal iPad, when you have your city business conducted on here, becomes public information in the right situation, and so that would be one of the reasons why I'm considering taking a city iPad, also because these specific preloaded software apps, we're calling them, I don't have on mine, they're rather expensive, and they will make life so much easier when doing city business. So... So, it can go both ways. So, if we had an option in there, I think that would benefit.
Councilmember Pirdop?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. More attention to our legal counsel. I'm concerned, as Vice Mayor mentioned, the co-mingling of personal and city business. And my understanding of the policy is, well, that might be allowed in this context. I don't personally care to do that and if I accept the city laptop, it would be only for city business, period. And again, if you're loading those software apps on the, on your personal items, that makes those searchable through Public Records Act, is that correct?
It very likely would, as you may be aware, this past year, there was a court decision out of the city in California where someone made a Public Record Act request for text data, I think it was texting, there's a just clause on a city council member's personal phone about city business on their personal phone. And the ruling of the court was that that was not a record maintained by the city since it was on the person's personal phone and therefore was not a public record subject to disclosure because of the simple logic that the city doesn't maintain as its records what goes on your cellphone. But here, as has been mentioned, if the iPad was the property of the city, then that electronic data does become the city's and might very well be subject to disclosure. And then you've got the problem if the storage vessel in which the city's information is stored is colling with your own, would raise a very real question that, and I'm not offering this as a suggestion or a recommended course of action, but I think that would be so as long as the device, the iPad in this instance, was the property of the city.
Thank you. So, just to follow up, the way I see this and as I'm reading the policy that was submitted, this would be an item belonging strictly to the city, but alone to me, if we accept this, I would check it out at the end of my term or whatever, we check it back in in same condition, I'll be responsible for it. That would be my recommendation and we stay with you co-mingling the personal business. Thank you.
I completely agree with that statement. We're in discussion, talk away.
I just wanted to check in real quick, based on what I read, and I don't have it written in front of me, I can scroll to it, but there was only two softwares, there was the iAnnotate and then there was the antivirus. And the iAnnotate, I believe, is $10, which makes the antivirus about like a $300 package or whatever that is, to make it $1,800 total for the software.
The total, the total for the software and two additional iPads would be $1,800.
Okay.
It may be much less than that, that was, you know, that I put forward on Monday, just as a ballpark figure.
Thank you for the clarification. And as far as the software for what we would be receiving, we would still be receiving our stuff through email. There wouldn't be a specific city software that we would be accessing our information through, it would still, iAnnotate is just to open up a PDF and being able to take notes while reading the PDF, am I correct on that?
That's right.
That part's correct, but it also allows us to receive our city mail via the iPad, so all that data that would be collected and stored through that mail server.
That's through the wifi.
Correct. And that's something that I can do as well with mine right now currently.
There seem to be some issues in the federal presidential race that are kind of pelling up.
I don't believe either.
Email. Just didn't want to get on that slope.
And so, I just think that there should be options, we should be able to take what the city is offering, but also having the option to do just as Lakeport is doing, where we can possibly save the city some money by providing our own, that way, we should be able to choice. I did have one thing in here that I was looking to change because it says you may not take part on social forums and take on another name or say foul things or anything of the kind, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but we just make an agreement that you just don't do social media on a city computer? I mean, we all have access to social media outside of the city.
No, we can't do that because we have social media as a city, our city has social media, so we can't do that. Our city has, that's something our city did, so how can we?
Yeah, we have a city Facebook page and we're going to be having a couple other.
Should have Twitter, we should have all these things.
No, but I'm talking about for the use of the iPad itself, if it could just be no social media within the iPad we take from the city, if you want to do social media, step away from your city borrowed computer and go ahead and do that on the outside, I just.
So, you're saying we can't go onto the city Facebook page? That's what you're saying, I mean?
From your borrowed city iPad. If you want to do that from your house, because this has all these regulations of what you can and can't do if we decide as policy.
If I can read it, so.
Please, okay?
Says incidental and occasional personal use of iPads is acceptable provided it applies to the following, and then it gives the list, so as long as you're not using it, misbehaving, going to sites that are restricted, that type of thing is how I read that.
I just thought I'd offer to add social media to that list, if you guys don't agree with that, that's fine.
There's just so much out there and I know that with the Valley Fire, with the Rocky Fire, a lot of pertinent information was shared with CDF briefings, et cetera, and I think that's acceptable, first of all.
Be responsible. I have a question because Lakeport did the cloud, so are we not going to do that? And I like that because then.
Personal workspace, music.
Well, everything, no, like the, their agenda, it all goes to the cloud, it doesn't get, you know, emailed anymore, it goes to the cloud and then everybody just goes to the cloud and pulls it off, the public can go to the cloud, pull it off, there's no more emailing, any of that stuff, they don't do any of that anymore. It all goes to the cloud, all the public has access to all the public information, it goes, they want to go get it, they go get it out of the cloud, it doesn't matter who it is, can get into that cloud and download, because it's all public information and download to the thing, so why do we not do it that way?
We essentially do that because we post it to our website, we provide it to you via email as a courtesy.
Okay. So, I mean, well, how is it, but that's not how Lakeport's doing it, they're doing it by the cloud?
We, eventually, I mean, I'd like to be able to do that, but for right now, here's what I've got. I've got the email and I've got it on the website, so maybe, you know, over the next year, so we can move to the cloud, I'd like to do that, but this is what I have right now.
Well, not only safe service, but, I mean, we're already doing the cloud for our finances now, so.
What's really nice about using the cloud and not saying that anyone's doing anything wrong, but what's nice about using the cloud is that when staff makes changes to a report or something needs to be updated or added, it automatically comes up and it saves that step of linking the new one to the email and then sending it up.
If.
Not that that's a huge burden.
If I may, that already happens currently, every time we get an update to our reports, it gets uploaded to the website and you're registered.
We're getting alerted by our city attorney here.
Madam Mayor, I represent the council, it's a robust discussion, but it appears to have moved off of the iPad policy and use of clouds, not our chip.
So, am I hearing suggestions or am I hearing opposition for what is being proposed this evening?
I would like the suggestion that we add options as well as the current one that is being offered to us. So that other future council members.
We do have a staff support. I can have our city clerk present that to us for clarification, if she's ready. There's two, there's one right here.
So. What additional information can I give you? What questions can I answer for you?
Exactly, I don't have any questions, but as far as clarification, I mean, you wanted options added, so not, you're not in consensus with this this evening?
I agree with the rest of it, I would like to add an option to use your own so the city doesn't have to buy more, if your council members or someone chooses to use their own or to pay back as another option for the city purchase iPad as well.
So, I think implied in any contract is the right to not enter into it. So, the option to use our own and not accept this already exists, in my opinion, am I wrong, because that needs to be written out and we're, like, we could just choose to say, no, thank you, I have one that works perfectly fine for me?
Tell the council member if I may offer, I have, I don't have the actual policy from what I am hearing, if the policy does not say that you may not use your own and it simply governs how you would conduct yourself in your role as council members if you took a city iPad, then this policy would not foreclose having your own if that's the route you wish to go and conducting city business on your own if that's the course that you elected as a member of the council, this policy would only govern how we conduct ourselves if we take the city's iPad.
Perfect, thank you.
As for the other option you propose, to give an option to purchase it over time with the payment being taken directly on assignment, I have no opposition to that, that's a good idea. Is that something that you want to try to change right now and have to come back to us, or do we want to solidify this policy and ask staff to come back to us at a later time with an addition?
Do we need to have a comeback if we want to just add that? If we want to add that the council can't purchase on a payment plan with no interest, do we need to, can we add that without having to postpone this or, and bring it back?
I would think if you make the motion specific enough that we can just add it in there, yes, you can do it by action this evening and not have to come back.
Would there need to be? Would there need to be specific language in relationship to it being a loan that I personally wouldn't be able to run on my head?
I'm sorry, council member, I didn't quite follow, would you say that again, please?
So, essentially, the option he's proposing is that, a council member would have the option to purchase this on consignment, basically, so you would be able to accept that and pay for it over time out of your stipend, not pay for it in advance, so basically you're receiving a loan, say someone pays one, makes one payment and then the iPad disappears, who's responsible then for the following payment? Or someone pays one payment and they disappear, then, I mean, is, does there need to be specific and formal language around this being a loan to the council member or is it just as simple as saying, we allow this option?
And I will need to apologize again if I was confused, what I was responding to a moment ago was the issue of whether you take the city's iPad or elect to use an iPad device of your own. If, now, now I'm hearing the second issue of the payment over time, what becomes of the situation if somebody makes one payment and then stops making them, that would need to be embodied with specificity into the policy. I, coincidentally, in dealing with that precise issue in another city right now, with someone who left their office, shall we say prematurely before the regular election cycle and still owes that city a substantial sum for the purchase of a computer on and installed the plan, so if we're also looking at wanting to address that, which I see makes sense, then perhaps this is one that you want to carry over to the future meeting and allow staff to develop that language for you, perhaps with our assistance, and come back to you in a more complete way. If that's the course the council's going to follow, then we would address the use your own option, I'll call it, in that policy revision as well.
So, I'm going to say I agree with what it is as of today and I will look at Lakeport's policy and send a copy over to the city and see if we can update it. We've already purchased these iPads, they're already here and maybe we can make this change for the next election before we have new council members who may also have iPads they want to use or iPads they would like to purchase on loan. So, as of today, in order to keep moving forward, because I think we do need a policy so we can start using these, some of us don't have these, let's go ahead and move forward as is.
So, I'd like to open this item up to public comment, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on item number six? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to. I would like to bring it back to council and I'll just state that, sorry, I guess, I don't know, I like finders, but.
You should print them out.
Exactly.
Still commit to the city and ask their paper product.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not worried about that, I just like. So, that is just, so may I get a motion if that is the case?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda item number six.
Okay. Can roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Pirdop?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Lustelma?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, public hearing to consider zoning ordinance amendments. DOA 2015-04, add a new article to the city of Clear Lake zoning ordinance and provisions to regulate telecommunications towers, antenna and relays systems.
Thank you, Mayor, Contract Planner Mary Price will be presenting this item for you.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council, good evening. I'm just passing out a description of what we're covering tonight, just to make it a little more clear what we're trying to cover today. Last meeting, this item was continued as we received a letter from Verizon attorneys regarding some potential inconsistencies with the draft regulations. As you may recall, the city has received a number of applications over the recent year for the development of at-large antenna cellular devices for transmission and so we are in the process of developing regulations that address fairly recent federal statutes. So, at the last meeting, the council did continue it based on the concerns addressed in the letter from Albatrin, Albatrin of Verizon. And so, what we did was we made some, we worked with them to make some revisions to the regulations with our city attorney, some of the definitions in the revised regulations were further revised. We talked about at the last meeting providing for a setback to height ratio, but we needed to double back with the Verizon folks to determine whether that would be considered acceptable in terms of not fully, completely precluding the opportunity for cellular devices and antenna. Their, their response was that they felt, given the topography and the orientations of lots, that that actual hard and fast requirement would actually violate federal law. So, what we did was we basically said if the height can be done as necessary based on the current height regulations in the zoning code, setbacks could be required to address aesthetics and compatibility so that the planning commission, when they're reviewing these projects, can apply setbacks as they need to. And the idea that we would also look at heights for these structures and other things as we do the new zoning code this year, that's kind of how we would address it. So, we don't feel that there's been any compromise in that. We also had a discussion of the shot clock as it pertains to various levels of antenna projects and cellular antenna projects. So, I hired, I basically pass this out for you to look at and there's basically three levels of projects that we look at in terms of, they're a little complicated, the first are what's considered eligible facility requests, and those are basically modifications. modifications to an existing facility, whether they be in a public right-of-way or on private land. So if somebody wants to come in and put another antenna on it, it doesn't result in an adverse or change in the actual antenna. So those are considered eligible facilities. And then there's call locations, which would be roof manor antennas where they want to actually modify and have an appearance change. So they add a more significant antenna, they add 20 feet to it, and would be considered a call location, also subject to variation and review. And then there is the more significant projects where we've been seeing where they want to put in a new antenna completely on private property and go through these from the planning commission. So the way the new federal regulations work is when they submit an application, as common through our planning regulations, you have 30 days to review it to make sure it's a complete application. So we take the application in, we transmit it for agency review, get their comments back, and develop, look at our checklist, which I think you've seen before, make sure that the application is complete. It's not, we send them a request for additional information to address those things. Once they submit that additional information, we review it and it's complete, then we basically certify that the application is complete, and it starts what's called a shot clock. So the first level of review, which is pretty minimal, is 60 days, and typically staff will review those things anyway. Within 30 days, review them, issue a billing permit, and they're up and going. The second level is a 90-day review. That's when we're a little bit more careful about looking at them as they might impact the neighborhood. The community development director, in this case, would review the project, and if they felt... The director feels like there's something significant there, we'd want to have public input, and we would notice the neighborhood. These are, you know, sending out notices to folks that own property with 200 or 300 or 400 feet of the facility. And then the community development director would review those comments they received, and they would make a decision on them. And then the third level is much more significant, and it's pretty standard to go through a use permit, have to look at... The planning commission looks at it, reviews it, determines whether to approve, deny it. Normally, they approve it with findings and conditions, or if they're in a situation where it's really an impact, then they would deny it with findings. And that's a 150-day review process. It gives that, the applicant or anybody in the public, an opportunity to appeal that decision to the city council final decision. The other two less significant projects are not... They're not... They can't be appealed, and that's the federal regulations that we stand on. So those are the significant changes we made to the regulations. In terms of the regulations you saw at the last meeting versus the regulations you saw today, those are the only two changes. And we also added one provision to hire a technical expert to assist in reviewing technical aspects of the wireless project if we feel there's some things that go beyond the ability to staff to deploy. So we added that additional provision, in the words from what you saw last meeting. The planning commission reviewed this item on August 19th, recommended approval, and in our last meeting, we talked about the opportunity to send it back to the planning commission, and we felt that the changes that are being proposed at the last meeting and, as we recommend today, meet the needs or the intent of the commission. So we are recommending that the council approve the regulations as proposed tonight with the changes. I was able to talk the call tonight and confirm that Verizon's okay with the regulations. They're not going to come back with a letter stating there's a problem, they'll go back. So we're good to go from their standpoint. And so we're looking forward to responding to any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you. Is there anything for the council? So I'd like to open this item up to public comment. Would anyone like to speak on this portion of the meeting? Seeing none, I'm back. Will you continue the public hearing?
Well, we would recommend that you close the public hearing, hold the first reading of the ordinance, read by title only, leave the further reading, and schedule a second reading for adoption on October 8th.
Close the meeting to that closing word, perfect. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Obrichin?
Aye.
Councilmember Pirdok?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino-Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Luscola?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. Moving on to...
I'd like to make another motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Moving right along.
I'd like to make the motion to accept resolution... Okay, G P 2015-01, and read it by title only. Sorry, I just dropped it. Sorry, case. There we go. The resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, adopting general plan amendment GPA 2015-01, adopting regulations of telecommunication towers, antennas, and related systems, and read it by... And leaving a second reading.
A roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Obrichin?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Pirdok?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino-Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Luscola?
Aye.
Before we move on to item number 10, I've been asked for a break, so we will take a five or seven-minute break.
I think it makes the portion of this... Do I need to make a motion on that?
Yes, you make a motion to amend the motion that's just passed to add the second reading, we schedule for appropriate.
I saw him in.
Second.
We're all good.
But I believe the second...
Don't we have to move on?
As it does not involve money, we'll just take a voice vote. But you do need to take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
At the votes?
With the record for select that all of the council...
...of the ordinance, that was not done. The resolution was passed, is that correct?
No, the first part was the...
Wait, wait, wait for the reading, schedule the second reading for October 8th.
Madam Mayor, as I'm thinking back, I realize we may need a further correcting amendment because I believe what the council member stated, perhaps did not intend, was the motion as stated and adopted, the original motion that he asked a voice vote, did say waive for second reading. I think that what was meant was waive further reading tonight and schedule the second reading for October 8th.
Let's start over.
I make this redo the motion, how about that? Is that okay to do? To rescind that motion and just redo it?
The motion would be to rescind the previously passed motion and to approve the...
Use the resolution? First reading of the ordinance?
To approve the ordinance without further reading, read by title only, and schedule second reading for October 8th.
Okay. But that's really the motion I already made, so what if I have to redo it?
Clarifications.
I think that the original motion, and then correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think it was misstated, the original motion was misstated to state that the council was waiving second reading.
No, I said further reading.
The motion that was made was to adopt the resolution. There's also an ordinance, the resolution 15, she read the title of the resolution, adopting general plan amendment.
There's two here.
Right, so we need two motions, one to adopt the resolution, and one to hold the first reading of the ordinance.
Correct, so we will rescind.
No, we don't need to rescind, we just need to review the...
I believe that you adopted the ordinance. So, I mean, excuse me, you adopted the resolution, so when you're going to hold these two down, you need to hold the first reading of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance, the GPA 2015-01.
I'm really... I apologize. I know it's very confusing. The resolution, the purpose of the resolution is to adopt primarily the environmental findings of exemption. And I see that I made a mistake in this resolution, so you might as well clean it up perfectly. The title of the resolution actually should be, instead of general plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, Z O A 2015-01, and I apologize, I made that mistake. So that's... And then you would have the second, you would have the reading of the ordinance, so this is right, you have to do two actions. So I apologize for that error.
So the resolution should be the Z O A 2015-01?
Yes.
And the ordinance is the amendment to the general plan GPA 2015-01?
Amendment is a zoning ordinance, there's no general plan amendment.
No, general plan amendment is only...
It's just zoning. Everybody else in the resolution, it's zoning ordinance amendment, it's just a...
Madam Mayor, if I might offer a practical suggestion, what we're experiencing may be the public need for that rest break. If we take the rest break during that break, staff will put their heads together and come up with a suggestion to the council on what the correcting motion be.
This is so, I'll be on your front. Now, back to break. Five to seven minutes, clarification break. Evening, we're coming back to session or to meeting, or we're coming back together.
Call the groups.
So with that...
Madam Mayor...
Go for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to rescind the prior motion that I made.
A second now? And a roll call vote, please?
A roll call or consensus?
Voice vote.
Madam Mayor, again, because it does not involve money, you could do a voice...
All in favor?
Aye.
Item... Any opposed? Next. Zero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to adopt resolutions, resolutions Z O A 2015-01, and read it by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, adopting general plan amendment GPA 2015-01, adopting regulations of telecommunication towers, antennas, and related services.
Second. And a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and a third motion to hold the first reading of ordinance number 177-0115, and read it by title only, and schedule a reading and adoption for October 8th meeting. Title is ordinance number 177-015, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, adding chapter 18.8 of section 18 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code related to regulations of telecommunication towers, antennas, and related systems.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That one over.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on...
I blame that on you, Gary. That was bad.
What happened again?
Moving on to item number 10, consideration to adopt resolution number 2015-29, authorizing the finance director to make interfund loans for the purpose of cash flow management at the current local agency investment fund, LAIF, rate of interest. I will turn this over to our finance director.
Or the city manager.
Or to the city manager, sorry. I always know who looks at who first.
I've said it's the ball, stop trolling. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight, I'm coming forward asking for permission, your delegation authority, to make up on interfund loans for the purpose of cash flow management at the current length rate. Let me explain why this is needed. Clear Lake, your council authority, and you've seen this before, I think you saw it at the last meeting, I'm now looking at the fourth item of council authority, which is interfund loans, which I've identified here as something that's within the purview of the city council. Now, when you adopt the budget at the beginning of the year, the budget is balanced, the total revenue is in, and the total expenditure is in, we're out, basically balanced. However, what doesn't happen during the year is the cash flow doesn't come in at the same rate as the expenses go out, and typically, in the city government, the flows out will exceed the flows in for several months before the inflows begin to overtake the outflows. And there are really two primary reasons why that happens. Your property taxes are typically paid late in the year. You get your property tax bills, and you typically pay them in December and April, which is what I typically do, because I would pay them late as possible, pay possible. And the other thing in the city is the grants. You'll notice over the past few years, we've had several significant amounts of grants come through the city. The thing about grants is you have to front the money and spend it before you can apply for reimbursement, which can create some cash flow issues. So to illustrate this for you, what I did was I basically took last year's cash flow, last fiscal year's cash flow, and before you develop eye strain, I created a graph so you don't... Don't hurt your eyes. But the top sublines deals with the inflows, and we have two primary accounts that we deal with, which is West America Bank and Bank of the West. West America is our general checking account, and West America Bank is holding all our payroll through. And then you'll see under that there's a LEAF in. LEAF stands for Local Agency Investment Fund. That's where we tie up our cash in a short-term basis, which is a fund which is maintained by the state of California for local agencies, and it pays a very nominal rate of interest. The second line is cash out, which shows West America Bank and Bank of the West, and then the bottom shows the difference between the money in and money out. So let me go to the next chart, which makes it a little more clearer for you. You will see that the large line here is cash out, and the blue line here is cash in. Now, you'll notice what happened in the 2014-15 year, and this is not atypical for a city, is you'll see that during this time period, basically during the first half of the year, the amount that's going out exceeds the amount that's coming in. So unless the city has a bunch of cash sitting around that's not being used by someone else, the city would have to go out and borrow the money in order to meet its... the city would have to go out and borrow the money in order to meet its payroll and its obligations during those months. Now, what basically causes this blip here, if you'll remember, during the summer last year, we had the Olympic Drive roadwork done, and we also had most of the Red Bud Boat Launch project going on during that time period. Those were significant outflows of cash, which we had to pay the contractors and then apply, in one case to the Department of Boating and Waterways for reimbursement, and in the other one, it was to HSE, to recover the funds. So, what happens is, we end up having to borrow money to cover this deficit here, and then you'll see in January, we had a very high spike of cash coming in. Now, that was a combination of basically three things that went on there. One was, your first installment of property taxes came in, and we also had, I believe it was a $600,000 payment from the Department of Boating and Waterways, and the other $300,000 was from, I believe it was from the state, I don't remember exactly who, whether it's the state or the federal was paying the other grant. So, we got in a total of over, almost $2, $2.3 million in that particular part. Now, we had other revenues coming in during that time period. So, during that time period, we had a lot of extra cash. It came back down to a normal level, so the expenses exceeded it slightly again. And then, you see your second payment of property taxes then coming in over here, and some of your other expenses. So, what happens is, you end up having to, you know, use cash flow from other sources in order to make those payments. So, as I indicated earlier, property taxes and grants are the two typical sources of that cash flow disparity. If everything came in evenly all during the year, there'd be no need for this sort of flooring. Now, the city clerk and I went back and did a search in the records for as far back as we could find, and I couldn't find any prior authorization that had ever been given by the City Council for transfers like that to be made. Now, I don't know, under the prior city manager, when the current budget policy was adopted, which specifically requires council authority for those interfund loans. But I want to make sure that the council understands that, that those needs are there, and I would like you to grant me the authority to be able to make those transfers from the other funds. So, in the situation for last year, what we had to do is, we had to borrow our transfer money in to cover our expenses, and that total borrowing got up to a little over $2 million up through December. And then, of course, what happened was, we got to make payment in January, we paid down most of that loan, and then at the end of the year, we paid it all off. To make it a little more easier to follow, what I've done is, I've put the two charts together, so you can see the relationship between the cash inflow, the cash outflow, and the borrowing that took place. Now, the borrowing that took place was basically from, from the bond funds, because that's our biggest pile of cash that we have sitting, sitting around. And so, that will cover the city's cash flow clearly over this year and the next couple of years, because there's enough in there to cover those deficiencies. At the end of the year, it all balances out, and the amount that's borrowed ends up being zero, because you've got the revenues come in during the latter part of the year to cover the expenses. So, you can see where the borrowing went up, because the expenses were higher, and then the borrowing went down and then disappeared as the revenues came in to cover it. So, that's, that's what creates the need for the cash management that I need to have in order to be able to make sure that all the bills get paid appropriately. There are other sources of funds within the city, but the two obvious that I look at right now are the Series A bond infrastructure and the Series B bond. That's about $90 million worth of stuff. But what I will tell you is, as we spend those bond funds down, the city at some point in the future may have to look at some working capital borrowing to cover those cash flow needs, unless we're able to build up our reserves to afford a significant amount over the next, you know, four or five years. So, this is, this is not an unusual problem. I don't want anyone to get excited about the fact that we have to borrow money. It's a normal process, it happens all the time. But I just want to make sure that you're aware that it's being done and granting you the authority to do it. Now, the late rate, that interest rate that is charged is the amount that's basically set by the state. It's pretty close to the federal funds rate, so it's really minimal. It's like a third, a third of percent right now. This is all interfund that's within the city, so there really isn't necessarily benefit to charging higher rates or lower rates, but there should be some, some interest charge. And by the way, I would mention that the late rate is also the amount that is, that the Department of Finance insisted be charged on the loan that the successor agency owes to the City of Clear Lake, which is, the balance is like $2.5 million right now. So, in order to be consistent, that's why I chose the rate rate. In terms of the documentation that would be required in a situation like this, just so you know I'm not pulling numbers out of the air, each transfer would be required to have a document that's authorized by me, it's a written agreement, the loan's coming from this fund to that fund, the interest rate is going to be based on the late rate. The late rate does vary monthly, but it's a fairly low rate. No loan will exceed one year, and the loans are to be repaid as soon as the cash flow allows. This authorization, just so you're not granting an unlimited authorization, also expires in one year. So, every year, whoever the finance director is, will have to come back and request this authorization each year. And so, you have an opportunity to either continue to grant the authority or not grant the authority as you, as you desire. I'd be happy to answer any questions, that was the end of my slides.
Thank you. Councilor Spatia starts off.
Just out of curiosity, I know that the late interest rate is really low. Do we have an interest rate at our West America Bank account as well, for when there is cash in there?
We do, and I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but I can tell you that it isn't much higher than the late rate.
I was just wondering if the interest on the negative and the interest on the positive kind of balance each other out, that's it. And I realize it's such a low number, but I was just curious.
Really, the, the interest really isn't between the bank and us. Remember, this interest is between funds within the city, so, yeah, both rates are very, very minimal at this point.
Any questions for question? I will open this item up for public comment. Anyone like to comment on item number 10? Okay. Seeing none, back to council.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2015-29, authorizing the finance director to make interfund loans for the purpose of cash flow management at current local agency investment fund rate of interest.
Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Wolferson?
Aye.
Councilmember Firdak?
Aye.
Councilmembers Thabatier?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino-Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Andrew Stilwell?
Aye.
Moving on to item 11. Presentation by Chief Lawson on crime prevention. Take it away.
Madam Chair, thank you, distinguished members of the council. Can sleep again?
You've lost one.
Come back, Ross, come back. Thank you. Now, am I on? There we go. Just to show you the staffing levels for 2015, currently, we have 22 and 1/2 total form staff that is budgeted, includes myself, Lieutenant Sully, five sergeants, which is four patrol sergeants, one detective sergeant, two full-time detectives, and a part-timer $900 detective that I stole from a certain American, which gives us 13 patrol officers. Currently, we have seven patrol officers, three in the field training program, one school resource officer, we have one individual on a long-term, undue injury, and we currently have one vacancy. So, out of the 13, we have seven working the street right now. The three that are in the training program, hopefully, we'll have one off next week. The second one is due to be off probably within 30 days, and the last one is a couple months, would be my guess. With our dispatch, this is our budgeted for dispatch, we have one supervisor and five dispatchers. That's for 24 hours, seven days a week, services including not only dispatching, but they also do all of our records and all of our matron duties. Our matron duties are when we have in our type 1 holding facility, when we have somebody back there that are required, that's how they're monitored when they're in custody. Our current levels, we have one supervisor and two dispatchers, and we have one dispatcher in training. The last time we were fully staffed in dispatch was in November of 2012. Since that time, we have continuously tested, and we're in background process, but we're on an uphill battle, it's not unique to us, it's region, if not statewide, for dispatchers and getting qualified dispatchers trained and working. What we have next is a comparison between 2004 and 2014. In 2004, we had 13 officers on the road. In 2014, we had nine officers on patrol. The blue columns are the incidents for 2004, and then the pink or the red, however, is going to show up on the screen, is what we have now. On the far left-hand side will show you our total numbers, and then the breakdown is incidents per officer. So, our incidents are pretty close to the same, but our incidents per officer has risen. Cases are the same, fairly close to the same numbers, within 600 cases, but our cases per officer have gone up. Same thing with arrests. I put 4.9, I apologize, that is burglary, where our burglaries have gone up. In 2014, they also had a significant rise per officer, the cases, the burglary cases that are being investigated per officer. You're over-doubled. And not surprising, when they're responding to the incident calls for service, our traffic stops go down. That would be a proactive, proactive thing that's going to happen, and we had a significant drop, and then the, the stops per officer has also been a drop, because when they're not out there fielding the calls for service, they're in writing reports. Not surprising, our citations have gone down also, but what is kind of surprising is, the citations per officer went up slightly. So, they're actually issuing a few more citations per officer, but they're down because of the number of officers actually working in the field. Now, here's, here's a tangible, very noticeable change that we're going to have, we're going to have law enforcement working with code enforcement, cultivation marijuana. Unfortunately, the people that spoke at public comment are not here, because we have a plan in place, and we are on the cusp of having it happen, we are just waiting for the legal process to go through, to have some abatement warrants authored and then signed by a magistrate, and we will be out executing those abatement warrants. This is blurry for a reason, it was accidental when I blew it up on the chart. I don't want people going out here, and I don't want to target anybody or have anybody else in danger, but the red darts, the red dots are indicating marijuana grows in the City of Clear Lake. These were found off of Google Earth, the most recent image, I believe, is in the April on Google Earth. The red dots indicate what can be seen is obviously outside of our ordinance's limitations. That's an overall picture of the city, and then we just divide the city in half, and the main reason I show this is to show that there is no area that is unique. There is no area not affected by the cultivation of marijuana in this city. It is truly a citywide problem that we need to address. Code enforcement got fully staffed in July 20th of this year. They did have to be trained in that timeframe, so it was about a two-week training process, so we're talking about a month that they have been up and running. In that timeframe, the voluntary portion of this, they have had 79 residences that they had self-compliance with, that number went up to 80 this afternoon. When you guys were in closed session, we had an incident that I'll talk about in a second. With just the self-compliance, they had 2,939 plants self-eradicated. The ordinance is working even with people just self-compliant with notification, hey, you're out of compliance, you don't, you're not within compliance of the city ordinance, need to do something about it. What we're seeing on the law enforcement side with the cultivation of marijuana, it's not unique just to large grows. It's happening with little grows as well, and we're seeing an increase in violence. We have five active homicides that are directly related to cultivation or the association of cultivation of marijuana. I'm not saying this is metal or not, I'm just saying that that has been at these, at these areas, and they're associated with it. I don't want to get into the details, because they're still ongoing cases, but they're absolutely related. We're seeing an increase in the illegal possession of firearms, increase in other illegal narcotics that are commonly traded for marijuana, increase in non-resident criminals, increase in home invasions. Our calls for service, the increase between May and October of 14, we had 148 calls for service just on marijuana, and that's, that's number is very low, because when we go out to a disturbance call, we're not tracking that as a marijuana call. These were strictly, the neighbor's growing marijuana, can you do something for us? 148 times, you had your officers go out handling these calls for service. As I spoke about, we had an increase in homicide, and we obviously had an increase in fire danger. Today, as you guys were in closed session or just going into closed session, we had officers go out to a disturbance call, somebody ran from us, they had an active felony warrant, they had to run through the marijuana garden, the owner of the marijuana garden came out of his residence to confront the person running through the garden, however, he was confronted by law enforcement, and he was armed with a firearm. That, that has the potential for very bad things. If you would have confronted the person running, we can imagine what could have happened, or when the officers got there, if they didn't have the restraint that they did, I wouldn't be sitting here tonight. This is typically what we're seeing. I'm not trying to dictate or depict any one address, I just want to give you an overall of what's going on with marijuana. We see a new fence being erected here, it's not only the six-foot fences, but you can see where the increase is over it. It happens to be that, that pickup there is about a $75,000 pickup. Here's what's on the other side. Oops. Oops. Large, large, solid fencing areas. And this is what they're going to the area. Where you see in the background, there's a, it's not only disc swing, it's like a growing tarp mesh that's in the background. Another large fencing with a, you're going to see in the next picture. That residence was red-tagged. That residence was actually abandoned, and no one was in it. The growers went in there and just set up residency in this particular one, and set up their grow. This is one of our voluntary compliances. The residence was red-tagged, and these marijuana plants are eradicated. In addition to just the marijuana that's there, you've heard about the environmental impact and the nutrient loading that's going into the lake and into our groundwater and everything else. The piles of potting soil and nutrients that are going in there in the fertilizer, that's all being left. New fences being erected on vacant lots or non-inhabited lots. They started out with bamboo fencing. Bamboo fencing went to a disc swing-type fence, and then the solid fence surrounding it. These are very large, organized grows on city lots. Well over our ordinance, but well under where we can get criminal prosecution for. Here's your red-tagged house with afterwards. Here's our voluntary compliance, this is a victory story. And this is what's, where it should be minus the growing plots. In addition to what we're going to do, we're going to tie it up with code enforcement to go out and assist with these executions of abatement warrants. We have revamped our community-oriented policing. We have re-divided the city into four sections. Those four sections will be assigned to the sergeants. The sergeants will then assign their personnel, so there's accountability that the sergeants will have that section. And then they can issue out the projects to the line officers. And the officers can meet with the community, hear their concerns, be a sounding board, and come up with solutions. Because a lot of times, we hear people that have issues, and the issues are being addressed, they're just not being addressed, or maybe they don't know that they're being addressed. A lot of them would be, we heard this evening that there is absolutely no enforcement at Redbud Park. That's absolutely untrue. Right before the valley fire, Lieutenant Sully made an arrest down there with a person with a gun. And just prior to that, he actually had a filing on one of our CMC violations. They do happen, they're far and few between them, but we're absolutely doing enforcement down there. Here's our city divided into four sections. This is clear, it's going to be clearer on a soon-to-be-released press release, and it'll be up on our website. Just when I enlarged this for the PowerPoint, it became blurry. Another idea, as soon as we get those officers off the program, and we're almost up to full staff, we're going to give dispatch some relief, and we're going to assign an officer in there at least two shifts a week. Right now, it doesn't take a math wizard to figure out how much overtime the ladies are working when you only have three working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They need some relief. But we're going to get back into our special enforcement. We're not going to have enough staffing to have a crime suppression unit or something to that effect. But we will have enough to have special enforcement activities where we can send a group, a small group, on overtime. Part of this overtime will not come out of the general fund. We have AV109 funding that we can use. We can get other agencies involved when their staffing allows. And we can use, because it's only between Lakeport and ourselves. And Lakeport, unfortunately, is in the same position we're at with being short-staffed. Regardless if we get personnel from Lakeport, we're going to do the AV109 special enforcement sweeps and do some proactive enforcement sweeps even outside of the AV109-funded positions. Because we're going to have enough staff that we can do that, even if it's a shift a week. In addition to that, I've heard a lot of comments from the community and yourselves about traffic enforcement. The expectation is we're going to have a unit on a semi-regular basis, it might be every other week or every week, go out and do traffic enforcement, and just make very high visibility stops to start curbing some of the traffic issues here in town. That's the end of my slides. We also have, I wasn't able to get it onto the PowerPoint, because I got tied up with an event that happened a couple weeks ago. And I have to give thanks to Melissa for making the PowerPoint pretty. Because when I had it, it had a blue background with white writing, and she said that was horrible. So she was the one that made it more presentable than to Chris to actually get a computer that would talk to that thing so it worked. But in addition, we have a, I have a proposed ordinance that I'm going to give to the city manager and then to legal counsel for basically a removal of persons from the park. With city property, we cannot trespass them from city property, it's public property. We have the curfews in the park, we absolutely do. But there are CMC violations, and getting those filed with the district attorney when they're so overwhelmed with everything else is pretty far and few between. We have persons that have dozens of citations and that are sent up to the prosecution, and they're not being filed. However, if we bump that up to a trespassing of 602, I think we'll have some more positive, and we can book a line. So it removes the problem for that timeframe period. That ordinance, the draft is written. I will get it to the city manager, unfortunately. Ryan wasn't able to be here, so I didn't want to play multiple attorneys and give it to one and then have it bounce around. But that is some of the ideas that we're going to be moving forward with once we get staffed. And it's on the horizon, we have light at the end of the tunnel. And the marijuana, with the eradication of the marijuana through code enforcement, we are absolutely on the eve of doing it without giving them too much information. I'm more happy to answer any questions if I can.
Very good. I don't see pins up, but you've been writing, Mr. Prodax, so go for it.
Chief, I was wondering, does state parole still exist?
They too have been cut dramatically. I don't know what their current staff is, but they were down to one agent for Lake and then Seale County. When we had two for the city of Clerk at one time.
Right, is that due to Prop 47?
In part, yes.
County probation was for probation officers?
They're actually a little bit higher, and we gleaned from Rob on those. He has a lot of sworn armed people out in the field now, and they actually have a lack of better term, they have a substation down here now. And we absolutely use them. And that will be part of our AV109 staffing.
And then, I think we worked, the CHP offered us some officers for Operation Safe Streets. Is that, are you going to come back?
I don't know if we'll ever see safe streets again, but...
I believe they use it here and also in East Calhoun.
Yeah, they absolutely did. The lieutenant and I have open dialogue. His personnel, when they head into the city, are more than willing to provide traffic enforcement for us. And if we need for calls for service, we absolutely work with them on that. And we also use them on those sweeps, because their expertise is in traffic, and they're a huge help.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, council members?
I was wondering, for myself as well as the public, if you can make the differences between incidents and cases.
An incident would be a call for service, a traffic stop, a pedestrian check. Any activity where the officer is going to make contact, or there's a call into our call center, that would be an incident. A case is a, the vast majority, 99% of our criminal cases, we do write non-criminal cases, but it's fairly rare. Most of our cases are criminal cases that either go to another agency, to the district attorney, probation, parole, CPS, adult protective services, those type of things.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I know that at one point, both myself and Councilmember Prodax spoke to Senator McGuire and asked him about Prop 47 funding. Has that ever been a reality, or is this something that we need to write a letter in the council to Senator McGuire to ask him for help in order to get that funding?
I would love to see the funding. I have yet to see it. The only funding that we've got is the AV109 funding, and that has decreased. But yes, there is some funding. With those two, the AV109 and Prop 47, it was a perfect storm, and not in a good way.
That's kind of evident, it's handcuffing you.
Well, it was a true story last night. Within the last 24 hours, there was a car stop made in the city of Clerk. And as the officer walked up, the suspect handed out a glass smoking pipe and the methamphetamine, and said, there's no need to search me, just give me the ticket.
And what was the name of that prop position, 47? Safe Streets?
Correct. Safe Streets of Neighbors. I think you're right. Schools and Neighbors.
I appreciate you looking forward to doing some traffic stops. I think that that has multiple levels of change for criminals wandering around our streets. Now they'll be a little more wary about wandering our streets, so hopefully we'll see a large effect because of that. So I appreciate you focusing on that. I had a question about your volunteers in policing. I believe that at one point, they were doing ticketing for parking, is that correct?
They still do.
Is that still active? Okay.
Yes.
And then also for the marijuana portion, for the eradication, do you have any idea of how many per day will be possible to be done?
No. And the reason I say that is I don't want to judge who's going to sign off on. We have to have the abatement warrants, and for the first couple, because it's going to be baby steps, that might be a slower process than we all want. But it's a learning curve, and I guarantee you, next year will be a different story. Because we are towards the sunsetting portion of that season. But we have the staff, we're going to have the policy in place and the procedures in place. The magistrates will have seen them. We're going to have to...
And are we looking at the, and I may be outside of the item here by talking about this, are we looking at what the county is already utilizing as far as a template for the documentation needed for the warrants? Since the county has already been using those types of warrants throughout the county?
Our legal department is...
Councilman, if I may add, our office has a fair amount of experience in abatement warrants, and that's what we're speaking of. And so we'll be working closely with the police departments, with the police department. Again, as with the chief, I don't want to give away too much, but I'll speak to you in terms of the days that we have ahead. Thank you.
Councilman Prodax?
Just to follow up, and I appreciate city manager coming to you, and this is a question I had. We've seen media reports that have, well, that are negative, outlining high crime rates in our city. Whether we agree or not, or disagree with those reports, it's a perception that's created. So I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job. But if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming before us tonight and giving that report, and hopefully changing that perception. We have nowhere to go but up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I too appreciate your presentation. I really like the word proactive being used throughout, and what was it, COP?
Top top. Community Organe.
Yes, thank you. I love those two concepts. I'd love to see them even further and further used. I think we have a great start with re-implementing a school resource officer, and then all of the plans that you have. You being in the classroom every day, how's that going? You should be recruiting right from there for your future dispatchers. But all of those things are ways that you and your staff are going out in the community and representing a positive relationship with the community so that people can move away from those negative connotations that they've had before about the police. And it's so scary. But really, now you're their teacher, that's different. Oh, that's not scary. Oh, this is the officer who comes and talks to my neighbors every day. Oh, that's not so scary. So maybe later we have coffee with cops once a month or something.
Gina.
Now I have a donut shop.
No, it's already in place to be said.
Is it happening?
Yes.
Yes.
But you weren't supposed to take the thunder away.
That was the next one. See, we're like right there.
Lorley.
All right, well, thank you for all that you're doing, we appreciate it. And for your offering assistance with disasters and the quick response and backup that you all provide, even when it's not happening right here in our city.
Well, after everyone speaks, there's so much, there's not much usually for me to say, but I will say thank you for this. I specifically had concerns about the presentation, and I wanted specific things said as much as possible, and they were, so thank you. I think it's a huge, huge thing for our community to know the reality of what goes on in our city and what it's related to. And that's very important to me, to get that information out to the public. So we did that this evening, along with bringing a plan. But the thing that saddens my heart is the homicides that are directly related to marijuana. It completely breaks my heart. But thank you for your hard work.
Mayor, if I could just follow up with that. We will be having more regular updates from the chief, giving you guys some regular information as far as what's going on with code enforcement and what's going on with police enforcement. So this isn't just a one-time thing, he'll be back on a fairly regular basis.
And that's wonderful, because again, it's not just about us sitting up here giving the knowledge, it's about the public getting the knowledge of what's going on to make their community safer and better. Is there any questions from the public on this item this evening? We won't be able to hear you if you don't come to the mic, though, sorry.
Thank you, Lisa, I was thinking. I have a big voice, everybody tells me I talk too much. Or too loudly, whichever. Chief, I know we have things like fence ordinances in town, front street, side street, whatever. And I have read them recently. But I am hearing that people who are trying to keep their dogs from barking too much, for instance, put tarps over fences. Or one of my neighbors has some of those plastic slats and metal, the metal fencing, what is it called? Chain link fencing. They're making plastic slats now that solidify the chain links. I think it's pretty, but yesterday I heard the comment that neither one of those things are allowed anymore. I think that's maybe not clarified far enough, and I'd like to hear some of your thinking on that. Set up a solid wooden fence. Are there other things people can do?
But unfortunately, that wasn't part of the, that was a crime prevention presentation.
Well, but it has to do with, it occurs to me that maybe the abatement aspect is telling people who are trying to protect their dogs that they can't do that because their yard is not visible from the street, for instance. See what I'm saying?
I do, and I would suggest that they get information from our city manager or our staff in City Hall versus the police department, because that is a civil ordinance that we have constructed as a city, as a council.
Okay, I guess I was leading to, are you looking specifically with abatement and police for marijuana? Or is it an overall kind of thing for the city?
Well, I believe this crime, this presentation had a lot to do with marijuana this evening. But code enforcement is throughout the city, if that's what you're, and they go out and do different codes that are civilly...
But I know about it. Marijuana versus...
I do, and I would suggest that they get information from our city manager or our staff in City Hall versus the police department, because that is a civil ordinance that we have constructed as a city, as a council.
Okay. I guess I was leading to, are you looking specifically with abatement and police for marijuana, or is it an overall kind of thing for the city?
Well, I believe this crime, this presentation had a lot to do with marijuana this evening, but code enforcement is without, throughout the city, if that's what you're, and they go out and do different codes that are civilly...
But I know you're laughing. Marijuana versus shielding the yard. Like I know, two six-foot wooden fences.
How about, I definitely know where you're at. How about I come visit with you and we have a chat?
Good.
Thank you. So with that, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Going forward, I will be reviewing all proclamation requests with the city clerk and the mayor to ensure that they meet with proclamation policy unless there's some other process that somebody wants to suggest. I've authorized the extended use of Red Bud Park by the South Shore Little League for fall off through November, so you should be saving those folks out there. I recently contracted with Mindo Lake Alternative Services to provide workers for our public works projects and to work at our animal control facility. They will provide workers of no cost to the city, and thank you to council member Product for all of them. I've also allowed Farmers Insurance to occupy a portion of our airport property for a two-week period to assist with Valley Fire victims, with them getting claims and handling that. There's a couple of events coming up. The Lake Leadership Summit is Friday, October 9th, from 8:30 to 2:30. It's at Marymount University in La Cern. Tickets are on sale now. That's a really good program for businesses, for business owners to attend, find out about different things. We have the Knockdie Challenge, which is Saturday, October 3rd, starting between 7:00 a.m. and 8:30 a.m. We have a Walmart Scoping Meeting being held in council chambers here on Tuesday, October 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30. That's going to be an open house format, so people can drop in at any time. We'll have representatives, we'll be talking about the project, and we'll be taking, it's not necessarily testimony, but we will be recording if people want to give input for what should be included in the scope for the EIR. And then finally, I'll be out of the office for most of next week, at the Lake of California Cities Annual Conference with some of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Overton?
Well, no need to say, I haven't been to any meetings, and so if I was required, I missed them, and I didn't even know it until today that I missed them, so. That was the thing, I said, I figured they probably were up, and I thought, will I see my packet here, because I haven't had time. So I basically have just been running the evacuation center. I really have some special thanks to Phil Harris and Travis Peck and Dennis Darmane and Yolanda Barrow, who were there when I opened up the doors. They heard, they were there only by the time I got the doors open, they were standing outside saying, "What can I do for you?" Thank goodness for really good community people, that when they know we're indeed, they were there. And I mean, Phil and Travis stuck with me really the whole time, throughout this whole event. I mean, every day, contacted me to see if there was anything that I needed, what could they do. So I really give them some really, way above and beyond their, you know, anybody's really, I mean, they were just really fabulous. So I also wanted to talk about the cameras at the park. You know, I've mentioned that before, that we had, there at the youth center, there is internet, and I'm sure that if the restaurant, they might have internet. We have some extra cameras. We have eight cameras that are, or eight cameras that are for outside infrared cameras, that I'm sure we would be more than willing to donate, but it would help paint up that park, because it's real detrimental to the kids to have that park the way it is. It is getting worse, I agree with them. It's getting worse and worse, even though, bless us, our cops are there, they were there today, I thanked them for it, but unfortunately, it just seems like, it's just like they're there, it's calm, and it seems like the minute they leave, it still becomes a nightmare. And I know there's no way that they can stay there all the time, but if you put those, if you put those up to the internet, our officers right here in the police department can see what's going on there, and can dispatch, they wouldn't even have to be called. They can see what's going on on the screen, and if they see something going on, they can dispatch somebody there very quickly, more than us even calling in. So it's just an idea and an offer that I'm willing to put up here. And the signs, do you need to be put back in the park? Is there a plan for the lighting? I thought the grant included some better lighting there. Is it just not happening yet?
My understanding was that we had finished out that project, but I'll have to check it out.
Yeah, because that was one of the things that was very specifically talked about, that grant, was the lighting, and Doug said the lighting was included in that grant. So I'd really like to check into that, because I didn't see any lighting going up there, because we had offered the vast people and stuff, and I had offered to put on maybe an event or something to raise the money, if they got that grant, and Doug said that that was included in the grant, so I'd like to check in on that. And I'm also looking to, when are we going to get our signs back up? That has our ordinance of the dogs and the alcohol and stuff, because, you know, and one time the park's going to close, we need to look into seeing when that's going to, how we can get that put back up, so. Anyway, and I just want to thank all our volunteers that did. I have a list here that I just want to read just in case, on anybody who wants to know some things about the Valley Fire. Primanti's Hotel is the headquarters and shelter, and they are, their casino park is closed, so they are still serving food to the public address that is open there, so you can't stop, but they have all the services there from Red Cross. Also, there are services at the Methodist Church for assistance living and supplies, yard supplies. Then the Middletown Senior Center has all the services, pretty much their PG&E, DMV, EED, Social Security, pretty much everything there you can possibly get. Middletown Lions Fund, bless their heart, they are a donation and distribution center. I was there, I felt for them, because I am still going through it, so everybody, you know, we love everybody. Please do not donate any more clothes. It's like overwhelming. What they're needing now is people want to go back, pop-up tents, you know, cleanup supplies, shovels, rakes, maybe tents, cooking, something that's safe for them to cook while they're on their property, because a lot of them are going back to camp. So if you want to donate something really, really useful, those are things that are, would be really greatly appreciated, just more camping equipment, pop-up tents, cleanup supplies. Middletown Animal Hospital, wonderful people there, stopped there, you know, so any supplies. They're doing free housing for animals. And Kevin Ty, I think it's Ty, Livestock Shelter is there. So, you know, I want to thank all these people that not only kicked in in Middletown here, but all the people that really helped with our Valley Fire. We really did come together as a community, as we always do, and that's the reason why I live in Lake County, because you can live anywhere else, and I've been in other places and other disasters, and never yet have I seen a community that comes together when there's a disaster of any type, although at this point, we still all came together. And I want to thank everybody that helped keep that evacuation center, because without my volunteers and my staff there, it would have been really hard, because we were in, and we did a great job. And thank you.
Counselor, if I may add, our office has a fair amount of experience in abatement warrants, and that's what we're speaking of, and so we'll be working closely with the police departments, with the police department. Again, as with the chief, I don't want to give away too much, but I'll speak to you in terms of the days that we have ahead. Thank you. And I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's something we can do, please let us know. And again, I appreciate you coming to us tonight and giving us your plan. I look forward to additional plans, as hopefully you get further staffing. And if there's something that we can do as far as helping to recruit, get the word out for dispatcher positions, I know it's a very difficult testing process, looking for that specific 0.001% of our population that can do that difficult job, but if there's
everybody has said everything and I love it. Because I'm not big with words all the time. But I will say that I've been visited quite a lot recently at my place of employment for the incidents and the things that were going on related to the fire. And I know that they were here during the Rocky Fire, the SBA.
I think they were supposed to be there for three weeks, but because of the Valley Fire, I think the governor has pulled them back. And they probably will be back once the fire comes down to be, I think they're probably up there as assisting now. But they probably will have them come back.
He is going to be here. He told me this morning, he will be here. The disaster assistance will be here through the 23rd of, I think, next month, he said. But I will make some more copies of these. And you're more than welcome to pick them up at my place of business if you need to. They are the homeowners repair or replacement loans at very low cost. And also to businesses that could possibly have economic injury or property damage or anything like that. And I do have his contact information. I believe he said he was going to be stationed out of Middletown now. They pulled him in that direction. Mr. Kumar from the U.S. Small Business Administration. So I have that information if anybody needs it. And I.
Mayor, we just interrupted you. It's also on our website.
Perfect. See, that's even better. It's on our website. You don't have to come see me. But you can.
Their interest rates are like super.
Oh, very low.
1.89.
1.875.
I asked if I could verify that as mine or something. No, I said, I'm okay to mine.
Yeah. The largest amount of interest that's showing on this is 6%, but most of them fall between 1.875 and 4%. So that's a huge help to the community and it's here. And so we need to utilize all the funds so we can get our residents back under housing. During this disaster, we, well, not during, thank goodness it was not during. It was after because we decided that they needed to do their job and then they could show us what happened and how we could help to fix it. So Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon and I were approached by Mr. Brian Botari? I cannot say his name right. From PG&E. And he graciously took quite a long time with us that day. And we toured his facilities there in Middletown, what they call a pop-up little PG&E city. And it's amazing. It is amazing what those crews are doing 24 hours a day to get our infrastructure in our county put back together for us. One has taken generations to build. It was destroyed within 48 hours. And now sometimes we don't realize that we're impatient with them. We want to fix right now. Why am I still out of power? Da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And they're working extremely hard. And they have rebuilt just about everything in a matter of weeks that it took us generations to build. So I just want to really commend them for their work. And our tour was educational, informational, and heartbreaking as we toured their structure and their facility. And they explained to us the three stages of the PG&E repair. They have the vegetation stage where they go in and they assess the damage of the fallen trees and the things that are dangerous for them. And then they have the assessment crew that goes in to see what's needed for the repair itself. And then they have the repair crew that follows in. And they explained how they were doing all of this from both sides. And it was just amazing. But then we took the tour. Then we took the ride. That was devastating. It's horrible. So with that, I hope we never have to sit here and have this conversation again. But that's been my past week along with work. And with that, that will be the end.